I'd like to record.
Okay, Dick. While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment to please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you. So our first order of business of the minutes, do I have a motion for November 2nd?
I motion to approve the minutes of order of the select board of November 2nd, 2020 as presented.
Any discussion? No, then we'll move to a roll call. Boyd?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And Lynn, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have one for November 16th, a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes of November 16th, 2020 as presented.
Your second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Boyd. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to roll call. Boyd?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And Lynn, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next area for discussion is the employee wage scale. Kevin, can I turn that over to you?
Yeah. Apparently. Thank you, Vice Chair. So this is a scheduled meeting due to the last work session and some of the personal commitments I had to review three incredibly important parts of the next few months, handful of months. First being the employee wage scale, preliminary look at the submitted budget requests from the department heads for, I'm sorry, for the capital budget. And then third, as a very, very preliminary list of potential warrant articles outside the traditional ones, ones that would be unique this year potentially if it's something that the board wants to pursue further. To the Vice Chair's point, the first on the agenda is the wage scale. What we've had historically, as we all know, is a pay grid, which saw
Oh, girl, it's okay.
A increase each year and the COLA. So every grade and step would have historically, it was always 2%. And then in addition to that, employees would move along that way, that wage scale. And usually came to over 4% annual increases. Last year, we worked on that. And a big part of the conversation that allowed us to move on it was the obvious economic impacts of COVID-19. And also, though, the long-term sustainability of that model that exists. And through the number of conversations we had, the model, the grid before I started was presented at the typical 2%, where we ended up finishing with the conversation was a 0% COLA. And everybody received a step. That accounted around, that accounted for about a 2.75% on average increase for each of the employees. This year, we've had conversations with the FinCom around sort of what their expectations are. They've asked what my expectations are of the budget process. And right now, based on how things have gone so far this year, how the revenues have come in, and how we've operated to make sure that we keep our operations going and doing right financially by the town, we're taking a similar approach with the budget recommendations that came from the FinCom. And it's, as such, one of the things that we're looking at doing this year off the bat was, let's do the same thing on the wage scale, the 0% on that grid, everyone receives a step. One of the things, though, that concerns me on that in and of itself is that we, with that, with that increase each year of taking a step, people max out at the top of that grid. And if there's not a COLA associated with that grid, that person doesn't receive any increase in that year. And as long as we're not doing COLA increases, it might be multiple years. And I have people this time around that will be seeing, if we go this route, 0% increases in multiple years while everybody else has seen increases. I always feel that an increase on salary or wage should be dependent on performance and not necessarily based on just the piece of paper that we're working off per se. You know, we've got some really hardworking people that have done amazing work this past year, especially during COVID, who will be affected either for the first time or multiple years now without seeing any increase while their peers have. And so I've, I, I feel that we have a great family here at Town Hall. I say family, and I mean that. We spent a lot of great time together working on very important things. And we've got a team of people working very hard. And so it's, it's been wearing on me how we can try to make it right, to try to do something where everybody can be brought up, but without it being the 4.5% increase by putting a COLA into the grid. And so one of the things I've talked about, floating ideas and working with our accountant and trying to find a solution is it, it will mess, it will dysfunction, it'll make our grid dysfunctional if we were to do anything outside of that grid. I don't think long-term that grid's necessarily the answer because of that issue of when someone maxes out. And if we're not doing 0%, if we're doing 0%, people won't be seeing raises who probably deserve it over time. But I think in the short term, right now, trying to find a solution that does not turn that upside down. And a couple of things that, that seem to make sense that I want to talk through with, with you folks to get some of your input on it. First being, we could always add a 12th step to the grid. It would allow us to be consistent with, with, with the grid and increases associated with it. But it does add a 12th step to that. The other option would be to freeze the steps for people this year and provide a COLA across the board on the grid, 2% possibly being the number. But those are sort of, in my mind, two of the solutions that we might be able to come up with to try to make sure that our, our, our team, our family here at Town Hall are treated equitably because that's what's really important to me. I don't think it's fair that if somebody's just going to look around and just because of either their tenure or their experience, they're not going to be seeing raises even though they've worked very hard. Just doesn't feel right for me as a leader, as a manager. And I'm trying to find a solution to that that might make a lot of sense, that we can be within the boundaries that we're playing, we're working within, and can be fair about it as well. And I'll also say that I'm also considering the long-term implications of anything we do. You know, we've talked about that pay grid last year and salary survey, which we're, we've got in quotes for that. And we're looking to move forward on that as well to understand how we're doing. But beyond that, you know, I, one of the things I'm, I'm considering, kicking the idea around, nothing is firm, nothing's committed to yet. But one of the things I'm, I'm thinking of is, do we use that grid as the hiring tool? It gives us a place to start, and people can negotiate based on their experiences and their skills within that, if we give a range. And then thereafter, people are not necessarily on that grid. And every year, there's a COLA, which is a common way that non-union employees are treated. It's a 2% across the board, or 1% or whatever it might be, and that do not, communities that don't work off a grid like this. Then it would give us a little bit of flexibility long-term and be allow us to sort of move away from necessarily that grid in perpetuity for some of those reasons I just talked about, about the equity that, that unless we're doing 4.5% raises every year, there's really not a, long-term employees are going to suffer. And that, that doesn't, that just doesn't feel right. So at any rate, what's been front of you that you, that we sent out a couple of days ago is sort of what that model looks like, the, the, the different types of COLA increases associated with the grid this year. The first tab shows a 2% COLA. So in theory, if we were to freeze the, the, the steps for people this year and do a 2% across the board, those would be the rates that those people would, so if you're a five, grade five, step three, last year, you'd be a grade five, step three this year, and you'd increase by 2% on that, that wage amount. If you look at the two tabs over on 0% COLA, basically, the numbers are virtually the same. But everybody would take that then step forward. So if you're a grade five, step five, you would be going to a grade five, step six, and receiving what equates to roughly a 2.75% increase. So
What was it? Excuse me, what was that last one? 3.3? How did you get that one again?
2.75%. That's basically what the average is for the increase at a 0% COLA from each step along the grid. So I wanted to just get some feedback from, from you folks and any perspectives you have. I wasn't around when the grid was created. I know there might be some intricacies and some conversation of how it came about and why it's being used and how it's being used. And I would just, any information, any comments, thoughts would certainly be helpful to me.
Kevin, could you just share the, the feedback or discussions that you've had with employees about these various approaches that would be helpful?
So I'm, I'm, I believe before, you know, going public with any conversation, you need to talk with the people that affects, and it affects them, the employees here. So I've had a chance to talk with every, everybody who's on that grid here at Town Hall and, and the department heads who also are affected by this as well. This grid represents people who are not in a union here at Town, for the town. And, you know, generally, what I've said is, I'd like this year to expect something similar to last year, or the same as last year, or similar to last year, that, you know, last year, we did the 0% on the COLA with a step. And that we certainly propose step, bring that out and have a conversation. And I, I could stand behind that if I could figure out a way to make it equitable for the whole team at the end of the day. And I think the, the other part of the conversation too was the freezing of the steps. And that's been something that we've been considering as well. And general feedback from the team has been, thank you for letting me know. Really hasn't been anybody who's, who's shown any, any real problems with the different scenarios. And certainly understand that my perspective is, you know, trying to potentially move away from the grid over time if it makes sense to do that. And we're something that we'll be exploring.
Now, what, isn't kind of by definition, the freezing of the steps with the addition of the 2% COLA, the most equitable? I mean, it would treat everybody exactly the same, would it not?
That is correct. That is absolutely correct.
And it didn't seem like there was any pushback on that. The general reaction seemed to be, you know, okay about that from the employees?
Yep. I think that, um, I, like I said, I brought both options. I told them we're looking at both. I said, we, we would, I told them we would probably start the conversation with what we were, did last year, which was the, the no COLA with the, with the increases. But we were still having conversations about what made the most sense for, for the whole of it. And I want to say too, I, I don't think that, um, it's, it's not all, any changes or any decisions we make isn't about any individual or any two or three people. It's the whole. I think that's important, too. You know, we know that we have teammates who are affected differently, potentially based again on where they fall on the grid. But it's the whole of it. What makes the most sense for the organization? And I say the organization, you know, we've got collective bargaining at certain percentages as well. And that, that separate, they're different, but they're also part of our team. And it's worth at least mentioning, I guess, that, that, you know, they have percentages that they're working through that we've negotiated or will be negotiating as well.
Kevin, do you have some aggregate numbers? So if we were to go with option one, say, which is the giving people a step if they have earned it, but no COLA, what would that cost us versus if we go no steps for anyone and a 2% COLA across the board? Do we know what those two numbers look like?
Sure. So the average, so it actually represent with the 2%, we'll start with the, the 2% COLA. It would be, so in aggregate, so we did have some adjustments that we're accounting for in a couple of the departments where certain positions weren't replaced, other positions were added on. The aggregate total bottom line dollar amount year over year would be a reduction of us before, and I should preface this, before the, any hiring of a recreation director. The savings, we'd have a savings of $7,052 roughly, about $7,000 roughly, representing about 0.33% reduction in, in, in overall. We've got about 2.0, almost $2.15, $1.6 million in salary that, that this represents. And so it's actually, even though everybody would be receiving a 2% raise, the overall net effect of the bottom line would be a, a reduction. Now, when we hire the recreational director, assuming that they're coming in, say, 19 hours a week, and say they're, they're at, you know, grade seven, estimate grade seven, six, that person would account for about $32,000 additional into the, into that, obviously then shifting the, the total dollar amounts, where there'd be a net increase year over year, which is expected anyway. But it wouldn't be, again, wouldn't be as great as the on average 2% increase that people would get. Now, looking at the, spare me for a second, I'll pull it right up. The other option that we're talking through. Other option is, like I said, on average, about a 2.75% increase per employee. And it would be a $1,730, so about $1,700 increase in the salaries and wages in aggregate before the rec director position.
Okay, so just for apples to apples, leaving the rec director out for now, it's either a savings of about $7,000 or an increased cost of 1,700. So you've got about an $8,700 swing between the two options. Is that right?
It's, it's about a little, about $11,000, I think. So if you, if you, if you do the, if you go with the, the 2.75% option in 0% COLA with the step, it, it's an impact of 3,800. And then if you go in the other direction, it's
I thought you just said 1,700.
Sorry. Yeah, apologize. I got a couple of spreadsheets up. I want to make sure I'm looking at the right title there. So I apologize.
Well, rather than the details, are you saying the difference between going steps versus COLA is $11,000 or $8,000? It's 11. That gives us an idea. That's just, it doesn't have to be accurate. It's a penny. Is, is that it, Kevin? 11?
Let me just, yeah, I believe it's, let me just grab the other, 7,000 plus 1,700. No, it's about eight, 9,000, $9,000.
It is 9,000. Okay.
Okay, so, Bo, it's, I'm sorry.
I apologize. My, my, I misspoke about the 3,700 because that was another column I had for something else on the spreadsheet that I'm working off of. But it's about $9,000 difference.
Right now, then, it looks like if we go with the 2% COLA, no steps, we're not getting much pushback from the employees. It's consistent across all employees, and it's $9,000 cheaper. Is that right?
Yes. Let me just, so, check one thing. Yeah, that's, that's, in summary, that's correct.
And it's also moving us more towards what you were thinking about is moving away from the grid because the grid originally was to help catch up the salaries of our employees with other towns. So it was a mechanism to slowly pull them back up to be at the median. So this would start to move us away from that if we find the salaries are in line with the other towns and go towards more just a, a COLA type of increase, which would, you know, be more consistent to employees and reward people who've been there for a long time, even if they've maxed out.
Yeah. And that's the, then, like I said, the other option too is, is the, the 12th step. You know, it's, it's taking a grid that's been established and modifying it. And I don't know, anybody has any thoughts on that, but it's, um, it's, that's the other option. It's the only other option that I can think at this point in time that, that makes sense to, to be within the, within the boundaries of what we've been working off of.
I, I, I mean, I think if we're moving away from the grid ideally, then adjusting the grid or changing the grid kind of, excuse me, is counter to that. So I think the, the, the initial thing we discussed is, is equitable and, and steps us more in the right direction, right?
I would say there's literally two parts to this whole conversation. One is, what are we doing this year? And the other one is the long-term effect of this. And what we should be asking ourselves, can we do both at the same time? In other words, can we do something and fix the long-term approach and deal with this year's at the same time? If we can't reasonably, we can essentially move towards it, as you suggested in some ways, Marshall, just now, moving away from the grid. Then what would our next step be the following year? And I think that also helps people have an understanding of where we're going. That is to say, the employees have an understanding of where we're going, not just this year, but into the future for their own thinking and understanding of what's happening within our pay, pay system. So I think it's, it's important to get that second piece as part of this discussion. And you suggested some things right there. There's something about a starting salary and then perhaps a mid-salary for somebody with 10 years' experience, and then another salary at 20 years, assuming that in each case, one of the 10 years and a 20 years that they're doing and have done a very satisfactory job. I, I don't know the details, but order of magnitude, that's something that I, I think you were kind of suggesting.
That's correct. I think the grid's still
It needs to be very simple. It cannot be this complex thing. And it can't be the sort of thing where it's increasing at the rate that it is now. We know that that's not working. That it's, it's unreasonable.
Kevin, you have close.
When do we expect to get something with a study? You said, once again, what's the status of the study? We're going out to bid for it now?
We've received a quote from UMass Boston. We've reached out to another company that some of the teams familiar with, that have worked in other communities to do salary surveys. It's actually the former town administrator and his wife from Andover. They started the company a few years ago, as I understand it. And then there's MAPC, who, I, they're doing a cost survey from all the communities. And I have been working with the person who's pulling that together. They've been delayed due to COVID and really taking it on for obvious reasons. People have been in other places with their time and capacity. But the, the hope would be MAPC might be able to do it for very little or no cost at all if they had the time and they, they took that on. And if, that's the one item I haven't gotten clarity on at this point. Once I do, we'll be able to move, I think, pretty quickly to understand how we're doing as a whole. And I think if we move away from the grid, it gives us that flexibility where we don't need to move, you know, if some people are being well compensated, considering market conditions, and others are, are far behind, if we're not using a grid that's being standardized, we have a little, I think, a little bit more possible flexibility to get it right if we, if we want to, and we think it's appropriate in certain places. But that, that's
Sorry. So how quickly could we move on that, Kevin? This is, I think, really important. We've had multiple years where we're constantly just at the budget cycle again and said, oh, it's too late. We didn't do anything yet. And this will, we've done this multiple years of not being in a position to effectively budget with that new approach.
Yeah. And I think, I think, I think for, for this year, I think there's, there's, you know, 2% or 2.75, whatever the percentage is, I think we're going to be in the right spot relative to what other communities are doing and what's right for the employees. And I think that if, if, if we take the, the approach of freezing the steps and just doing a COLA, it sort of starts moving people in that, that direction already. I think for, for future purposes, if we take that step today, we're sort of moving it without the sort of drastic change. We're actually moving, I think, slightly in that direction that people understand that the, the COLAs are not necessarily going to be tied to a grid per se, if that's what we end up wanting to do. If sal, if the salary survey comes back. I think the salary survey can complement it, but it's also, it's, it's independent of what we're talking about right now because I think that's our opportunity to see how we're doing market-wise. And if we're way behind, you know, do we want to catch up with some, with some COLAs in the future years? Or do we, if we're way, if we're doing really well and that we're compensating our employees like we should be, or, or they're doing really well, market considerations, then, you know, we can slow on that potentially too, or, or keep it at a consistent COLA that, that makes sense for what other communities are doing and what we, we think's right.
Which was the first, the one that you mentioned, the first organization that you mentioned?
UMass. The, the group that's, that's
UMass.
That's performing the HR study? Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The thought on the Collin Center at one point was the Collin Center were interested in doing it. It would cost us money, but they would be doing it essentially for multiple communities there. Because once they do it, it's public knowledge. So it would be understandable that Telfield pays for it and everybody else enjoys it. Is there, is there a way to get them to do it? So is that still part of their discussion, the idea that they want to consider multiple communities and something?
So the way I, I was at a North Shore Task Force, MAPC North Shore, North Shore Task Force meeting with a bunch of the mayors and town administrators. And I grabbed a handful of them. And I, I mentioned, we were looking at this. And, and a few of them said, oh, yeah, I'd pitch in if you, if you decide to go forward, Kev. So there's, there's interest in a couple of the other communities, one of which
Excuse me, Kevin. So what you're saying is that the Collin Center is interested in that approach, but also MAPC is? Or just that that's, that's where you sought people?
MAP, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, I may be see twice. MAPC had a, an opportunity for the group to get together in person, not to talk about salary surveys. But I, after the meeting, I approached a few of colleagues about the idea of sharing in the cost. And they seemed that there was an interest for them to do so.
Under the Collin Center approach, in other words, the Collin Center doing it, you're helping the Collin Center recruit towns that would participate?
In essence. And they're, if they pitch, if they pitch in money to, towards it, they're more unlikely to contribute.
Okay, okay.
I, I personally kind of like the idea of freezing the grid and going with the 2% COLA because that, that gets us more closely aligned with what we're doing with union contracts.
And then also, I mean, it moves towards that idea of using the grid as a hiring thing in that
Yeah.
This is where you're hired. And now the grid, once you have a job here, ceases to be a thing. It's, it's, it's told us where you begin. And then after that, we're dealing with raises as
Performance.
Or performance, or in whatever form. We're not locked into this, this, you know, I, I know it's not quite arbitrary, but it can be used arbitrarily, grid of steps and, and, and all of that.
Another consideration, Kevin, is what's happening with other communities? Do you have, this I realize is anecdotal, but can you say what other communities are doing with pay increases for employees?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I have conversations with, with, with them often. There's similar approach, I think, in a lot of communities is what they did last year. Some communities, someone, and I think Middleton came in at, at 2% or 2.5%. I want to say Marblehead was at 1.5% or 2% for their, for their office employees. Some of the other communities were around 1%, I think, last year. But the general consensus from conversations is that they're thinking of doing similar to what they've done in the past, the last year.
Okay. So if you had, if you had to pick a market, if somebody asks you what the range is for similar communities in Essex County, you would say somewhere between an increase of 1% or 2, between 1 and 2% increase?
1 to 2%.
Oh, excuse me. Middleton had 1.5, 2.5, you said. So between 1 and 2.5% increase.
Somewhere in that range is what I, my, most communities I spoke.
Thank you. I think that's very important, too, because we talk so much about market, understanding what's happening, regardless of where we are in the market at this point, which we don't know because we haven't done a salary survey, but be somewhat in line with what other communities are doing. That's a, that's a bellwether to us also. Again, though, I'll come back to, if, before we make a decision, a final decision. Again, though, I'll come back to, if, before we make a decision, a final decision on what we're going to put into the approach, I think it's important for us to, to know what the long-term plan is to move from that so that the, not only we know and the FinCom knows, because we're going to be doing the five-year plan, but also the employees have an idea. One more thing, you, you mentioned talking with the people at Town Hall. Have you talked with any of the librarians?
I, I have. So I talked with Laura, actually. I did not have a chance to talk with. The, the one department that is most highly staffed with people in one department affected by this is the library. And so I have, I have not spoken with them as individuals, but I have spoke with Laura and I, I've spoke with her subsequently, because I first approached this with all the department heads a month ago when we talked about the budget. And I have not had any, any, I solicited feedback. I did, I did not receive anybody, it sounds like, who are in any camp or any, any hard positions or any concerns at this point. Similar to my conversations with people here at Town Hall thus far. My plan is that actually, once we've had this conversation and get some sense of how, you know, we've had this conversation, go back and, and talk with everybody again and just let them know sort of where we are in the process and the considerations, where, where, where we're at. And again, I do think a lot of people, I've, I've talked about just the COLA approach with people in the past, just in general terms, not about this particular year, but in general terms, trying to get away from the, the step plus COLA. And I think that that would not be a surprise to, to anyone who I spoke with or will speak with if we continue to head in that direction.
When do you need a final decision on this, Kevin? From us? Because it seems like the general consensus of the board right now is that going with a straight COLA is, is probably the best approach. It moves us away from the grid and the unsustainable increases. It moves us in line with what other towns are doing. And it doesn't modify or add to a grid that we're not intent on keeping anyway. So it's, this sounds like the way that we want to go.
Not even only just other towns, but just the world around us. I mean, corporate America, the places I work, you know, we don't have grids. So, you know, I, I like the idea of moving more in that direction.
Well, me, me too.
I mean, you don't want to go fully my direction because then you don't give anyone a raise for 10 years. So I'm not recommending that.
Directionally, we're in line.
Marshall, you brought up a point a little while ago that I think it makes the grid a usable tool when you're hiring a new employee. It gives you the ability to, to try to place that employee where they need to be placed to be competitive.
I, I'm happy to take credit for that, but that was something Kevin said initially.
Well, I understand.
Exactly what he said.
Okay.
But it was my idea completely.
So Kevin, back to when do you need a decision from us on this?
So quickly, I think that, you know, the budget package has gone out to, to the different department heads. And we can, we can certainly provide clearer guidance to them sooner the better in regards to that. I don't know if Catherine's on the line, if she want, if she has any thoughts on, on, on how soon on the calendar it makes sense to get confirmation on it. Because she would be an integral part of ensuring that those numbers reflect whatever decisions are made.
Catherine, you there?
Yeah, I can just tell you that the, the, the budget packets have been dispersed and they're expected back on December 29th. So this needs to happen sooner than later.
Always sooner than later. I'm sure that's good. Thank you, Catherine.
Does anyone need any additional, additional information to make a decision on this?
Well, on the subject of the amount, just, just so we have it clear, you've, you've done the, all the negotiations for the union contracts. And for example, the police were 1% plus a half a percent for being an accredited police department. The fire department is a little more difficult because of the many changes that were made in the, number of categories, but I think it, it tended to be about 1.5% is what you said. So the number of the union things are at the 1.5%, correct?
This fiscal '21, the police, as you, as you stated, Mr. Gant, and the fire for fiscal '22 will be 1.5%. We did increase on their, starting next year, their EMT percentage from 3% to 3.25%. But they'll also be starting to pay back that, some OPEB contributions as well. So the net effect, for all intents and purposes, from a COLA standpoint, is probably the cleanest if you just look at the COLA, which is 1.5% for the fire.
Okay. So that, that should affect our thinking here also, if, if we're talking about it. I would also ask that we, this has been said before, last year, I know we had this discussion many times before last year, but even last year, that we refer to it as an increase, not as a COLA, because it is not in any way tied to the government's COLA number. So it's, it's not a cost of living increase. It's an increase in the grid period. I think that's, I think when we see it in writing, when we talk about it, it's, it's better to be accurate.
It's an annual raise.
John and joined, and joined in on that one last year strongly. Go ahead. Yes, Marshall?
It's, I was just saying it's an annual raise. And again, speaking from my, my life in the corporate world, which is heartless and cruel, they never would tie anything to COLA because that ties them into a number that's always going to be bigger than anything they want to give. So it's just, this is your, or lack thereof of an annual increase.
Kevin, just to, for comparison, what was the prior year that the police and fire got? This year, the increase is 1.5%. What was it last year?
They've historically received 2%, same with the fire department and most of the other collective bargaining contracts.
Okay. So they went down a half a percent. If we do 2% for our employees, they're going down 0.75% because their step is 2.75. Just as in apples to apples.
If you're solely looking at the COLA, that's an, that's accurate. I mean, there's, there's.
Because last year they didn't get any increase besides a step.
With, right, exactly. And there's, there's, you know, the education incentives with the fire department. There's other things that were negotiated that got us to that number. So it's tough to do just a straight apples to apples.
What I'm trying to get to is that the, the police and the fire might have taken a little hit or with what you're saying, they stayed even because they're getting money in other areas. So if we assume the Town Hall employees will be looking at this as last year I got 2.75% increase, what am I getting this year? So if we drop lower than 2%, that's a, a bigger decrease probably than what the police and the fire got.
I would say that 2% is a fair number. I would stand by that number. I think that's a, a good percentage and.
I'm just trying to compare with the 1.5. So I didn't want to say have our employees dropped down to 1.5. That's a much bigger drop than what the police and the fire went through because they were starting at 2.75. So the 2% I'm comfortable with, I think that that's a decrease. And yet it, it still gives them something substantial enough and starts to move us where you were intended on us heading. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to probably go lower.
Well, in addition to that, it, we, we've talked a lot about eliminating the grid as a, as a tool. And, and that's been part of the problem in the long-term, you know, you know, what we were doing was unsustainable. And so, you know, I would rather say, you know, we'll deal with 1.5 or 2%, whatever seems to be the, the water level at the time that we're negotiating or at the time that we're organizing all this. But the fact of the matter is what we were doing was unsustainable. And we might now be headed in, into some area where we can legitimately say we can sustain this on a more reasonable faction.
Marshall, do you have any thought about the, the percentage?
No, I mean, honestly, I, I think it's fine. I think it, it, to your point, Lynn, fits in with kind of where we are with both represented and unrepresented people. And it's better than most people are doing right now. So, you know, just again, from the outside world, there are plenty of people in plenty of industries and plenty of places who are not looking at any decreases and/or any increases. And in fact, in a number of places, we've seen furloughs and decreases. And we've managed to avoid that this year here. So I, I mean, I, I think that this is, is a perfect solution. It's equitable. It gives people something. And I think big picture moves us more in the direction of where we want to be.
Dick, any other thoughts on your part?
I think we have a consensus.
I agree.
Great. All right.
I'll, we'll, we'll, we'll move based on the.
You, you will talk with, we, we need to get to the library employees. I, I missed the library's last meeting. I didn't, I didn't attend it. So I don't know that they did or didn't bring that up. But the, the board itself needs to be aware of what's going on. And certainly you need to have a handle on the employees themselves, whether.
Yep.
Laura needs to talk with them, but you, you need, you need direct feedback from Laura or you need to talk with them.
Yeah, no, now that I've had, we've had this conversation, I'll plan to, when they have a, a department meeting, they, which they do on, I think, monthly basis, I'll, I'll try to, if it's coming up, I'll try to be there to, to address the team and, and let them know where, what direction we're heading.
And you'll let us know if there's any surprises?
Absolutely. And, and I, I, I will.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Okay, the, the capital budget, Kevin?
Yes, thank you. So similar to the pay grid, this was last year presented to you folks before I was part of the team. But I came on right towards the tail end of the cap, capital process. We then took it last year and made all the adjustments, got the number down to $300,000 from the free cash. And then from there, worked with the FinCom and the Select Board and, and really did a great job of, of identifying some of the other items, which when the, we started to see the forecast for the financial forecasting with the revenues, we pulled back some of those capital items last year to stabilization, which was the right thing to do. And it's, we've still been able to operate just fine with the approach we took last year. This year, we've taken a similar process with outreach to the department heads asking for their capital needs on a five-year plan. Team did a great job getting, getting quotes on these different projects, providing details associated with the different projects on the five-year plan. The, the, the focus on the packet that I provided you this afternoon shows the five-year with the numbers, the details of each of the projects. I focused mostly on this year's, what those projects look like. And I just say that this is presented, in essence, I've made some tweaks as I've talked to some of the department heads as they've come in. But in essence, it's the presentation from the department heads of a starting point. There will be items which will move from, say, free cash into another category. There will be items which might be removed. There might be items which get moved out a year or two, depending as we work through the process. But again, this, this is a starting point for us. And just kudos to the team for spending the time, understanding their needs and helping us put it together in a, a comprehensive package. I will also note that if some of the projects that we had, a project, telephones, for example, last year, was actually this year funded through CARES funds. And we'll probably look for an STM to make that transfer to support potentially one of these other projects in the future. Also, there's, there was a couple other capital projects which we've been able to tackle this year that might have been future projects. We've looked to have done the fiber project, for example, as being one that at some point we were going to have to find grant funding or go to town meeting and a warrant article that's being funded through CARES funds. So we've leveraged those opportunities this year to, to move some of the projects that either were on the list or would potentially be on the list and found other mechanisms to fund those. I guess before I get in, if, if it's okay with you, Vice Chair, I think maybe I'll just give you a hot, a, a quick hit on the items that we have. I don't know if you want to go through all the detail today. Maybe give you a chance to review it before our next meeting, but maybe give you just a quick summary of each of the items, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And then if, if anyone has any questions, there were a couple that I just had questions on. So without going into deep detail, I don't know, did everyone get a chance to look at the capital items ahead of time?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Yeah. Then if you want to do it at a higher level, Kevin, just can I ask a question? It looks like then for this year coming up, it's about 1.6 million is the requests, the total of the requests. And we have three, right? 1.587?
So the town side of it is, is 700, just over 750,000 out of requests. And the water side's 841,000, accumulation of about 1.6, like you said, Vice Chair.
Okay. So for the town, the 746 is what we need to get down to the 300,000 to meet the FinCom guideline?
Not necessarily. So some of those items will be funded in other mechanisms. For instance, there's HVAC at the fire station, which we feel confident will have grants from green communities to pay for. But we're still considering capital work and it's accounted for in that 746 as well. So that, that, for instance, will go down, but still will happen. Some of these other items, there, there might not be grant opportunities or other funding mechanisms that could help us get there and they might have to be pushed out or, or removed if it's something we think we can do differently.
Okay. So they're willing to fund 300,000 or that's the, the dollar amount we have to hit, plus whatever we get from grants or other sources, but 300 is still the, the target that they had identified?
300,000 of free cash, yes. That's, that's the, that's the policy, the capital policies of the target for us. And last year, we were very fortunate that we were able to hit that number. And the, the, not just the expectation or goal is, but we will be at or very close to that 300,000 again this year when all said, all said and done.
Okay.
So town administrators component of this budget, there's an annual maintenance fund that's funded through a warrant for typically $25,000 roughly, give or take, that helps support all of our facilities. So we have in the operating budget monies that allow us to do regular maintenance. But if something comes up HVAC or something unexpected, we can tap into that as a resource to help cure a, a facility-related issue. Again, standard warrant article item that we've used free cash for in the past. The second one is a generator. There was a, my understanding is when the rehabilitation of this building, Town Hall, took place, there was conversations and, and a design for a generator to be here at Town Hall. That generator was value engineered and was not part of the final product. But a lot of the setup of the systems here are built in a way that would accommodate a generator that can help us in the event that there's a power outage, obviously. It allows us to keep our operations going. And with the Fiber Loop project or Fiber Network project that we have too, the servers being centralized, centrally located here at Town Hall, this would give us additional security in the event that there's a power outage that we can keep operations going for a period of time. There's two options. This is the lesser of the two costs. One was a 35 KW and the other was a 90 KW. This is the 35 KW option.
Say that last piece again, but I also want to hear from Boyd on this one. 35 and 90, is that the two?
Those were the two that were priced out, kind of the two elements.
And the 45 is for the 90?
The 45 is for the 35, it might be 38.
Got it. Go ahead, Boyd. What's going on here?
Well, 90, in my opinion, is out of the question. When this building was renovated, the architect and the engineer said that we needed about 40. It was conceived that you could probably run, and this is before the days of the fiber network, for sure. So, and that's changed things. But it was felt that we could probably run what we needed to run on 20 kilowatts. Because in those days, we were talking about the fact that the only thing we needed to do was keep the building from freezing up in the wintertime. So we needed to keep the boiler going and the heating system going. 90 kilowatts, in my opinion, is absolute overkill. Um, ninety kilowatts, in my opinion, is absolute overkill. And if you put a generator in that's, that's sized to produce ninety kilowatts and it spends its life running at fifteen or twenty, you're going to shorten the life of the machine. So you need to size it basically for what you gotta do. And uh, I don't see it being more than thirty-five or forty, thirty or forty kilowatts.
Kevin, was there a reason that you estimated ninety?
Um, that was just a proposal. We had an expert come in, um, actually Chief Collins Brown spearheaded the effort to, to price out generators at, at key uh, town buildings, police, fire, town hall. Um, and when the gentleman from, I think it's SSE came in, um, they gave us sort of a, a couple of options um, on the quote that they provided us with. And just internally, internal conversations, um, you know, Greg Crom and engineers who had some insight into it. Uh, type of size. Um, we did feel confident, just as Mr. Jackson had just pointed out, that the, the thirty-five would be adequate um, for our needs here. Um, so I'm not sure why they put the ninety in, to be frank. That's the, but I know that, that was the other option that they presented to us.
So the thirty-five covers the fiber. Does the fiber make the requirements higher, more significant?
Um.
I, I think it.
Fiber needs to be on, on batteries, just as we have our computers, uh, the servers and that on batteries. This, the uh, that, that needs to be done the right way.
Agreed.
Honestly, you have a generator or not, they've got to be on batteries. Batteries are less expensive than they used to be. We should be able to, for purposes of what fiber is doing. We ought to be able to cover that with, for a long time with batteries.
So you feel confident thirty-five can accommodate any additional um, growth activity, Kevin? This isn't something we're going to have to come back and upgrade a short time later?
I don't believe so, but again, we've, we've had a, a couple of conversations on, on this. My hope would be to get a little more granular as we go through the process to, to just ensure, you know, there isn't anything else that we need to be considering to do differently. But again, just based on where we are in the process today with, with, in, in the capital proposal. This, this was the number that felt, based on the proposal, the right one to go with at the time. Um, but we'll keep looking.
I'm going to agree with Dick here. Um, because I don't think the fiber network in, in, increases necessarily the size of the generator. I think what it does, it makes it more critical that we have a generator uh, that's going to keep the building functional and the fiber network functional, which we did not have before. Uh, before, we said if we have a power failure that doesn't last more than a day or two. Uh, we'll send everybody home and keep the boiler running so that the building doesn't freeze out. But uh, that's changed a little bit because now we've got to have a uh, battery backup system that runs a fiber network. And so that the need for electrical power becomes a little bit more critical because of the fiber network. But it doesn't in, I don't think it increases the need for a bigger generator.
Kevin, that battery, is that all covered? Do we have the, the backup necessary for that fiber with what's being installed now? Is there anything additional?
I know that um, I'd have to, I could double check with Tyler, who's been running point on, on all the elements and components. But I know in the project meetings we've had, it's been a incredible emphasis on the need for sustainability of the system and backup capacity in the event we lose power, the line goes down. We have the warranty, for example, the company will come out immediately if the line's broke to, to repair it. Um, we need to, we need to ensure that we are able to be sustainable in the event we go down as soon as possible. And so we're putting as many efforts as possible towards it. And the generator is part of it. It's not going to solve the solution. It's not the solution, like everyone said. But it, it will help us um, in the event that we have a power outage, batteries, whatever it might be. Redundancy is a good thing.
Okay. Were you trying to jump in?
Yeah, when we, when we met with the um, generator person, they're, actually fiber was like a, a distance thought. That wasn't really what we were thinking, even that. Um, the, the, the bottom line is you have all these employees who are working remotely. They've gotten all, gotten computers to work remotely. And if the building's not up and the servers aren't up, then they can't work. So that was that. And additionally, you have no backup for that elevator. So if you have people trapped in the elevator without backup, um, those are the kind of things he was looking at. So the, the size of the generator was, had nothing, nothing to do with fiber. It was simply to do with how much of the building do you want to be able to keep on generator? So uh, I do think that with that, uh, keeping that on, you know, it would be, like you said, Kevin, fine tune it with, um, speaking with him more about exactly what um, what does it look like that would do what we need to do and at least at the bare minimum for now.
Okay, thank you.
We installed a connection for a generator into the building. There was something that was talked about after the building was finished because of the heat, that we would have an external connection to put a portable generator in. Is that, is that completed?
We have that.
We have it.
There, yeah.
We have that. That, if you take a look at the left front side, it, yeah, that little white box out there where we're putting the electric car charging station.
Yep.
That little white box is the external connection.
Great. So, okay, so right now, if we have, if we have an outage of any duration, we're going to go out and rent a generator?
Yes.
We're gonna, we would have to try to rent a generator and get it here when everybody else will be looking for the same things too, that.
I understand. We've, we've been through this, Jen. Yes, I agree. Um, Boyd, when we had these discussions, Boyd spent a lot of time trying to figure out who would be, who'd be available to ensure that we had it. Um.
Yeah, none, none of us would.
This particular generator is intended to be installed someplace onsite to be a backup generator whenever we have an outage.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, I think we get the gist of it.
Installing this?
Let's ask.
Where would we be installing this?
One, we looked, one place we looked at is exactly where that switch is. And the other place that we looked at was, um, for lack of a better location um, towards the Proctor School in the corner. Um, to, because you want to be able to access the, the utilities in the building. That's the, the less expensive way to do it.
Do we have a panel now? Boyd, you would know, from, from the original construction, is there an emergency panel, so to speak? In other words, circuits that are already set aside as emergency circuits for a backup generator? We must, we must have that because that was part of putting that, that switch in, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, if, if you don't mind, everyone, just for the purposes of getting through the budget, if we could talk uh, details about the generator later and let Kevin get through the rest of the items, we've got six pages of capital items here.
Good idea, but I think it's, it's, I, my thought was this, this generator was going to be the, instead of going out to rent one, it was going to be stored up at the highway garage and brought down. And I thought forty-five hundred, forty-five thousand dollars was a lot for that. Now I understand that we're planning to install a generator. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to the next.
Um, so then we have peg in there cap uh, cable. I, I, it, I put that in there mostly as a placeholder. Um, because we're going into negotiations um, with the um, two providers. And if there's, um, might not be this year, but it might be next year, where we're making some investments in regards to it. Um, in addition to any uh, funding we get received from the incumbents, um, it's just a placeholder. Um, of going down to the police department, we have um, three items this year. Um, it is a, first being a, a police cruiser. Um, second is cruiser radios, um, and the third being also a generator, which the generator the police have is an internal generator that is from the nineteen eighties, um, that typically has a useful life, as I understand it, of around twenty years. So it's, it's a little bit dated. Um, and so this, this is to um, obviously replace that, uh, that generator. The generator, as I understand it, works, but it's a matter, only a matter of time, I think, is when, if they need to flip the switch over, it, it doesn't work. And um, obviously at the police department, it's important that they have that backup if needed.
Kevin, it's a small dollar amount difference, but uh, um, do they have more requirements than we do? Their generator is more expensive than what we have budgeted for the town hall?
Um, spare it me for one second. Um. Trying to see if I can get from, I'll certainly have more further details on this. I know we talked about it last year even, um, some of the specs on it. Um, I'll, I'll make sure I mark that as something to, to bring at the next session when we talk. Um, some more details about the, the, the bid associated with that fifty thousand, um, that's in the, in the capital request. I don't know if it's going to be the same cost as ours, or if it's going to be lo- more, less, same. Um, but I will find out the, some more additional information on that for everybody.
Could you just once again review the status of the existing generator? Did you suggest it does not work?
It does work. It's a nineteen eighty-eight generator. Um.
It works. There's, there's, I, I thought there was something you said it sometimes doesn't work or something. It.
You know, I said, it's the end of its, its expected life, something like that?
It's, it's gone about twelve years beyond what the typical expected life for one of these pieces of equipment, as I understand it. And so it, it's sort of a, you want to be proactive. You don't want to be scrambling if power goes out and having the, um, you know, plan for the, plan for the improvements necessary. So this is just a, at some point, the, if we have to transfer over to the generator, it, it probably won't work. And there might be a point where it just can't be fixed either. Um, so that's why this has been in. I know it's been in, looking back at the historical capital request a few years now that it's been um, looked at. Um, so anyway, it's in there for discussion.
Okay. And we, yeah, and we'd like to know that the nature of what we're doing here. Are we replacing it in place? Or is this putting it on a pad outside the building?
Yep.
Fire reasons and all of that sort of thing. Can we just understand what those things are too?
Yeah. And that, just for what it's, I, I should have says at the top, one, I have meeting set up um, week after next with all my department heads to talk about the, the budget before it's submitted. Um, by that time, we'll be right, refining this capital pretty well. Um, I'm going to have conversations before then, but just for its worth, I will be having set meetings to talk about budget and capital um, in the next couple of weeks too. So we'll have all these answers and, you know, very, very detailed explanations for each. Um, I think the cruiser's self-explanatory. It's been in there uh, annually. And then uh, cruiser radios, um, chief indicated that there's a need to start uh, replacing those radios uh, over a three-year period.
Um, so this is the first of, of fifty thousand dollar cost, six, forty-eight thousand dollar cost? This is the first year of that? Is that, is that, oh, I see it's spread out. Okay.
It's a, yeah, it's, it's a gradual approach. Yep, gradual approach on replacing those. Um, the fire department and chief, please, please feel free to elaborate if you, if you'd like, being on the call. But we've got two items. One's HVAC and boiler, um, and some other, we've talked about a little bit, the comprehensive um, approach we're looking to take with weatherization and others factors at the fire station. Um, and then the second is um, roof, roof work that's needed um, at the fire station as well. Chief, you're on the call. Feel free if you want to elaborate on either.
Yep, the um, uh, like you said earlier, the boiler is a sort of a placeholder. It's something that needs to be replaced. Um, but I think I presented two weeks ago, uh, a more comprehensive plan. Um, using grants to work on the building envelope and the heating. I just, but we, but we don't want to just rely on grants. So we wanted to keep it what it is. Again, it's a super old system, inefficient and uh, through the CARES Act, we're going to be able to work on some of the air handling part of it, which is most important in the COVID world, but all the other stuff needs to be addressed. Um, and the bill, the roof was on, um, we proposed it last year too. Uh, we're talking about the slanted front roof and the rubber roof in the back. Um, the rubber roof in the back has, um, is a cork, a cork um, lining with rubber over it. So the water is wicking in the cork, the cork. So I'm actually had someone come and drill it and look into it and see what it was. So that's not recommended at all. It's recommended that you have a foam um, layer underneath the rubber. So those are leaking. We have water inside the building. The ceiling from the inside of the building has come down because of that. We patched a lot of it. My people have been really good about using their own time and equipment and, and knowledge to do that. But um, at some point, these are um, these are old, old, um. Uh, you know, assets for the town and they need to be replaced.
Just for the record, Jen, do you have an idea of how old that roof is?
Uh, the uh, rubber one, I think, um, I think I put, is it ninety-one? Uh, let me just look one second. The, I have no information on the um, sorry, the rubber roof is ninety-four. I do not have any information in this building on the um, the asphalt roof. I, I don't know that, but the ninety-four is the other roof.
Great, thank you. That's like twenty-five years for the rubber roof. Yep, got it.
Yeah.
And the fact that you don't have information for the asphalt would say to me it's older.
You got that right, yeah.
So based on our discussion, when you, when you, when we, when the board approved the HVAC from CARES, the real hope is that the boiler will be done through a grant, but as you point out, we can't depend upon grants. We have to have a plan ourselves. But uh, hopefully we're, we're looking for a grant. Is that correct? That's what I understood.
Very correct, yes.
Thanks.
Uh, green communities is one that we're targeting specifically to help fund some of these improvements.
Jen, only if you had any, you know, uh, success at getting grants, then we would.
Yeah, right, I know.
So um, just moving on to the elementary schools, um, last year, this was on the um, on the docket for last year. And um, it, it got pushed out um, to this year. And this is um, the master clock replacements at Stewart and Proctor. Again, I think we did spend some time talking through what that looked like. Um, and I'll have further conversations about uh, this with Dr. Morrison to, to see how, what it looks like compared to last year and, and what flexibility, if any, there is with this uh, for this year. Um, as we work through the process. But that was the capital request that came from the elementary schools this year. Um, and I would note that we did help through CARES funds pay for technology at the schools, um, which I believe was part of the reason you don't see technology in this year's. Capital budget. Um, the, the next one's the highway department. Um, the DPW building in general, um, there's a round of thirty thousand dollar uh, replace, or uh, replacement of the HVAC system uh, that's required um, for the building, entirety of the building. Um, what we've, would, it was presented from uh, Superintendent Wilds was um, thirty, thirty-five percent of that cost will go to the water department, which was confirmed by uh, Superintendent Crom. And then uh, the, the remaining um, percentage associated with the uh, the sixty-five percent was split between highway and Parks and Cemetery. I've talked with Catherine and Garrett on this. We're going to be, be meeting in the coming weeks to determine if that's appropriate. Um, how we do those splits. Is it based on square footage? Is it of use of the space up there? And I say all this because now the Department of Public Works, uh, the Department of Public Works building now houses the administrative components of the Parks and Cemetery, um, which is a change from historical. So we're going to dig into that and see what the right breakout looks like. Uh, Mr. Wild, uh, Superintendent Wilds put a um, for, for placeholder purposes, did split it uh, fifty-fifty between the two departments he'll be overseeing.
Kevin, how old is that building and that HVAC?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Okay.
This is the full replacement of it?
I.
I, I don't know. I haven't talked to anybody about it, Dick.
One second, I can give you the details.
That's, of course not.
The AC portion has failed and the heating unit is uh, is, is, is having a lot of maintenance issues as well. So half of the system is not working, basically. Um, and the other system, part of it's failing. And I know that um, Paul is um, our facilities person, has been up there working with them to try to identify if there's cost-effective solutions or if it's past its point of repair and it's more cost-effective to go out and do a repair, a replacement um, of the unit.
Um, so Paul is spending the money as if it's his own, right?
Abs, well, we, yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's what we want him for.
His, his, Donna and I are very, very, very direct with him, you know, letting him know that it, you know, just that. It, we want to make sure we exhaust all options when it comes to any types of repairs, but we want to also not put good money after bad either. We want to make sure we're, we're timing things the right, the right way. And then we're, we're putting good thought into the projects. Um, the last one I hear is the multipurpose sidewalk plow mower. Um, last year, um, this was budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and it was scheduled for fiscal twenty-two. When we had the backhoe repair, which was scheduled for fiscal twenty-four. Um, need to be replaced sooner. I had a conversation about moving. Um, need to be replaced sooner. I had a conversation about moving that out a, a year and everything else back one. Um, as it's been submitted, it's in the same location in the same year. Um, I had a conversation with Superintendent Wilds. Um, he does see a significant benefit of that, that piece of equipment. Um, so we'll be working over the next couple of weeks to see if that's the right price for it, if that's the right piece of equipment and if it's the right year to do it in. Um, but it did, it's worth noting, the estimate of a hundred thousand dollars, which was in the previous budgets. Uh, the actual cost off the state bid list for that piece of equipment is a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Um. But I'll have more information on that. That, and to your point, uh, Vice Chair Bermuda's. Three hundred thousand dollars of free cash gets, uh, used up pretty quickly with a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar piece of equipment. But, uh, if the real dire needs there, we'll, we'll make sure we, we prioritize it as needed. Um, and so that's on the highway, parks and cemeteries, um, HVAC that I mentioned earlier on that. Uh, oh, I apologize.
Fire suppression?
Fire suppression, yes. Fire suppression is on there again this year. If you remember last year, we had a long. Uh, a very thorough conversation about that. Um, uh, there is, uh, a connection needed to fully fire suppress the building. Um, and, uh, this is that, um, on the, uh, capital list this year again. Um, the split again is, um, thirty-five percent going towards, um, water. And then the sixty-five percent being covered by highway slash Parks and Cemetery, um, as it's been budgeted here. Um. And then the, um, Parks and Cemetery, uh, the HVAC is in there as well, as we mentioned. Um, the two thousand nine pickup truck, um, that is be, uh, due to. Um. There's concern that, that the truck will pass inspection, um, this year, as it's been explained to me and that the, there's some issues on that. So it's been, it's been, it's been marked here on the budget, uh, for the capital, uh, it's a capital item for this year. Um, and the nineteen ninety-six tractor as well, um, is, is on this. Um, and then the fire suppression. Um, two, two other just broad things I want to mention is. Uh, I know that Superintendent Wilds, um, spent a lot of time really digging into the capital this year. Um, both for highway, which he's now doing his first capital on the highway, but also for the Parks and Cemetery, which he's now taking over as well. So, um, I know that these numbers have changed because he's done a lot of research, um, in due diligence and he's, he's. Spent the time to sort of prioritize what he thinks, how all the pieces fit, what the order should be and what should be, uh, up this year. But again, that, we're going to have the conversations about what we can do this year and what needs to be done this year. Um, and the last thing.
What is the tractor?
Um, let's say exactly what it is.
It's obviously not the plower field.
It's, um, it's, it's a John Deere, um, tractor that, um. It pulls a large mower deck to cut.
This is the Batwing mower?
Uh, I don't think it's a Batwing.
No, no, no. It's, it primarily a towing, primarily a towing vehicle to tow a trailer. To get lawn mowers back and forth downtown DPW and Parks and Cemetery.
It's used on the larger field.
Oh, I got you. I got you. Oh, okay, okay. Seventy thousand dollars for tractor? This is a trailer, you said. It's not really not a tractor. It's a trailer.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is, no, it tows a trailer. It's a tractor.
Okay.
It includes a front mower deck attachment.
There's a picture of it down lower. There's, there's a picture of it down lower. You can see what it is.
Um, one of the things I'll mention too is that I've, Superintendent Wilds and I have had a conversation, um, that. In the coming days, weeks, we're going to have a, uh, he's already been working on it, but I'm, I've asked him to give me a comprehensive list of our, of our fleet. Um, for the two departments, years, hours, um, condition, useful life left. So we can come up with a capital plan because it's not unusual. It's mostly the case, as you all know, we've done this before, that. Uh, these departments tend to have heavy equipment and heavy equipment costs money. So we need to have a replacement schedule that we, we can be considering. And I know he's already thinking about that. If you notice some of the dates on these vehicles and the dates in the outward years. Have a consistency, a number of years spanned between them so they can serve a place in the fleet. But, um, we're going to, as we get deeper into what the priorities are and what we're going to be presenting in the next round of the capital. That will be part of that conversation, um, that we look at that and that helps inform the decisions we're making. Um. So then the last section of the town side of it, um, is the library and there's two components of that. Um, there's a fourteen thousand dollar, uh, request for a fire alarm panel replacement. And then there's a security camera request, which we, we spoke about the cameras last year. Uh, the request came in again this year for do, to do that as well. Um. And.
Are any of these Kevin covered by any funds from the library?
So I asked that question when Lauren and I talked about her capital. Um, she said these items, um, she was very confident would not be covered by the gold fund. Um, and so, um. We, we, we probably will have a conversation with, um, with, with David and, and just say, you know, these are what we're looking at. Is there an opportunity with either the gold, gold funds to, to help cover some of these costs or, or the costs in its entirety? Um, but I know the security cameras were not approved by them. So it's really the fire alarm panel. And my understanding is typically they have not, um, supported those types of, uh. Maintenance or improvement related items.
I thought they covered some maintenance. It, it was a gray area as to what fell under maintenance that they approved and that they didn't. But, you know, making sure the place does not go up in flames.
I think that's, yeah, I mean, it's.
Preventive.
I, I agree. I think the root, like for instance, the roof, they've said, we're not going to, we're not using gold funds for the roof. And in the same sense, you could make the argument, you know, you have a big hole in the roof. All your literature is going to get wet. Um, but it, but I, we will absolutely make that, have that conversation to understand if it's something that, uh, could be. Um, considered because it is something new and different. Um.
And if it is maintenance, man, it says here that the internal circuit was overheated and it's physically compromised. It's like, that's a maintenance issue to replace that if there is a maintenance fund, you know, to protect the books.
Right. And I mean, I, I know Chief Collins Brown and I have talked a little bit about it as well and, um, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know. Is there any other option other than a full replacement too? Is there, I know that it's, it's hard to come by parts and pieces, but. What else could be possible? So we, we are exploring different options on that particular item as well. Um. So last section is, um, that wraps on the, on the town side request. Um. And then going to the water fund. Um. The DPW HVAC, we spoke about that. Um, the water department office is, is apparently not hooked up to the HVAC, to the rest of the building. And the request came in for a split unit to go into that office space, uh, at a cost of fourteen thousand five hundred roughly. Um, on that. And I will note that on the five-year total plan, that, that's been updated since this came out to you folks. Um, to, to be consistent. Um. The next item is a fire suppression, um, system. We've talked about that. This twenty-six thousand two fifty represents the thirty-five percent of that cost. Um, the water storage tank, um, there's a inspections every five years. Um, that, that take place and that's what that represents.
Kevin, can I just ask you, is that, uh, what's the definition of, of capital? Is an inspection capital?
So I actually asked the exact same question to Greg, um, when he submitted this, um, and. Uh, Greg indicated that historically had been put into capital. So for today's purposes, I left it in. But I'm not sure if that technically qualifies as capital to be, to be frank. It's, it seemed to be a maintenance or operational item in my mind as well. But that's, that's something that, um, has been flagged. It's, as we work through the departments to different capitals, we'll dig into that a little bit deeper. But I.
Okay. Thanks.
Absolutely. And then, um, the next one is the water stor-
I, I, it's a great discussion to have. Um, the, the issue is, is the, um, budget, is the budget built to handle. Maintenance items of that, of that size. And if not, while it's not a real capital item. Is it still a warrant item? Because we don't want to, we don't want to blow up a budget by putting in some. Big line item for one year, but rather do it as a warrant article.
Yep. Absolutely, absolutely factor that in. Um. The water storage tank replacement. So, um. One of our, our, our tanks, uh, the Boston Street tank is failing. Um, it, it is added and beyond its useful life. We had some significant cracks. I had a chance to go up there with Greg. Um, uh, gosh, a few weeks ago and actually inspect the, the site and inspect the tank myself. And they had just finished making, um, some temporary repairs to prevent the water from leaking. Um, there's a significant loss of gallons of water minute, by minutes coming out of that water tank. It's secured now, um, but it's, it, there's an incredible amount of patchwork on it. And all indications are that the inside of it is, is obviously failing because the water's coming through. Um, and if the steel that's around that casing is failing, then, I mean. It's one of those situations where you, you might be able to drain the tank, put some, you know, patches in there with some steel. But it, the next foot over might open up the next day. Um, it's, it's past its useful life. So, um, this represents the two seventy-five is a feasibility study and the design associated with replacement of that tank. And the one point five million next year represents the actual construction of that tank. Um. And then the last one for this year is the water treatment upgrades. Um. As I, I, I've mentioned to most of the select board, I had a chance to talk about the PFAS and some of the testing requirements. Um, we moved, I got Greg's revised budget after we had a conversation yesterday. Um, to include this as a placeholder for right now. Over the next couple of weeks, we will know more information to see if this is something that's needed. But, um, we're, we're putting in sort of the worst case scenario. Um, just so that it's accounted for, for the, for the time being, uh, but more to come on that. So that's the capital.
Great. Well, you guys and your team, Kevin, did a, a great job in, in providing the detail and, and taking that. Five-year look. This is a great document.
Appreciate it. Although hard work goes, and the credit goes to the team for pulling it all together. There's a lot of work behind it to get those quotes and the, understand the pricing. And whatnot. It's still a lot of work to go, to, to, to happen as well, but it's a, it's a good process.
So we'll take a look at the schedule and see when we get together again and to walk through this after you've had discussions.
Yeah, the final capital I, I have on my schedule currently is the se- uh, seventh of, of next month. Um, to distribute the five-year capital plan, the final one to, to, to the board of selectmen and to the, um, FinCom. So over the next four weeks, we'll be able to, um, like I said, get some more specifics and get, uh, a little tighter on the numbers.
And, and, yeah, details on some of the items that we discussed there. So we should actually discuss that probably at our next board meeting.
We'll be ready then, Kevin, with, with our next one is what, Monday?
Monday.
In discussion and, and.
Yeah.
I, I was hoping to meet with the team following this before having, uh, uh, coming back to you because it would be pretty much a very similar conversation, I think, at this point. Um, without having a chance to talk to the team.
Yeah, with tomorrow being Friday, there's, there's not a lot of time to prepare.
Okay.
I think what we have is on the seventeenth, uh, work session to review capital. Um.
Good.
That, that's on the calendar for a couple of weeks, a week and a half out.
We can do it.
Then you'll be ready for the final on the seventh of January, hopefully.
That's, that's right. We'll get, we'll go through it in detail, add its changes and then we'll go forward. Yep. Um, last item for today is, um, the, the town warrant and, um, additional articles. Um, wanted to just have a very high level conversation about, um. The warrant and, um, what some of the, what I've been doing is, as we've had conversations with, with, with our team. And I've had conversations with the, the different department heads through the course of the year, um, been sort of keeping tallies of things that might be. Uh, things we want to bring up as part of the, um, warrant. Um, outside the typical budgetary items. So, uh, what this represents, if I can get the document to open. I apologize, the document opened for me right this second. Sorry, everyone.
You're opening that, Kevin. Can I just ask, so there's nothing on here from the schools? Is there anything additional coming in from the schools?
On the capital or on the warrant?
On the warrant.
Uh, I have, uh, so the, I've sent an email to everybody that the warrant articles are due to me on the tenth of December. Um, so they have a one week to provide it. At this time, I've not had any requests from the schools. I know that, I believe math in focus, which was one of the items that was put onto the warrant last year, is not going to be requested this year. Um, there is the possibility, last year, process-wise, they gave us the technology ask a little bit later. But that was because we took it out of the budget. Um, so at any rate, we will, I will be sending reminder emails out to the, to the department heads, including the schools. Um, asking for anything that's, uh, a warrant article or warrant item that they want, warrant article that they want us to consider putting on. Um. So, um, I, I had detailed notes for each of these that I was going to read off of, but so I, for some reason, it's not opening up, um. Uh, for me right now. So what I'll do is I'll just go through each of these and just give you a, a quick idea of what they are. Um, and next steps associated with each. And please provide any feedback you might have. Um, and if there's anything at the end, which I haven't mentioned that you want to, um, bring up and for consideration adds to the ongoing list. Um, please let me know. So the first one is the, um, general code. Um. Before I came on, there was an effort made with a, uh, a vendor to, to, um, um. Provide updates, um, in, in codification of our, um, uh, bylaws. And, and I, I'd say bylaws because it does not include our zoning. Um, and so, um, Clerk Beth Willis is working with that vendor to get exactly what the changes. Um, that they're looking at so that we can bring those changes to town meeting. Those changes are really, I, I define them as cleanup. It's, you know, spelling. Changes that they've identified that are needed in, uh, existing bylaws, it's grammar, it's, it's format, those types of things. Um, I had a, a, a brief preliminary conversation, just to tee up with KP Law because they're involved in this process as well. Um, with Lauren Goldberg and, and one of her, um, one of her staff members. And we just touched on these very briefly, went through them. This is one where they've done this in other communities. They have a template that they said they can just forward along, um, to use if we want. But, um, that's something that's in process right now. The septic loan program, um, that's the same as last year. Um, Health Director, uh, it, it asked that we put it on here for conversation and discussion. Um, and, um, through the process, um. Um, we, we certainly might land where we were last year, but, um. She wants to just provide some additional information in the process as we go through it. Um, sign ordinance updates. Um, so we spent a lot of time on signs recently, um, with the election was recent. So.
I wonder why?
So we, um, we, we, we had a chance to kind of dig in a little bit on that. And, um, there's certain things that, um, are questionable if, if, if they would hold up in a court of law. Um, if we held to those standards in the existing language, specifically, for example. The amount of time prior to an election, you can put a political sign up. There's been case study that says you can't limit that free speech. But our, our local bylaws does prohibit certain time restrictions. Um, things of that nature, um, we're going to take a look, I'd like to take a look at and, and, and try to make those as. Um, clear and consistent, um, with, uh, how we understand, um. The law and making sure that it, it's abiding by it. So Glenn's looking at that and, um. Again, KP Law has helped us with, with sign ordinances already, um, as we've had a couple of attorneys reach out to us around our ordinances. Um, and they're well positioned to help us with this as well because it is a little bit of threading a needle with trying to, with, with restrictions. On, um, signage. But there is an area where we can do so. I'm just going to take a quick sip of water, sorry.
So these are no other changes, Kevin. This isn't, we decided to change our Route One standards. This is strictly in making sure that bylaws adhere to the law.
That's, that at this time is the intent. If during the process, if any of the select board wants us, uh, as individuals or a whole, to consider doing something different, we can certainly have that conversation. And we should incorporate it at this time too, so that whatever we want to do, we can fit it in and make sure it is, can hold up in a court of law and constitutionally legal.
And since our zoning, since our sign bylaw is a zoning bylaw, it needs to go through the planning board in the process.
Yes, and I know that Glenn was talking with Martha Morrison, I think, on just that. Water restriction bylaw. There's, the commissioners have identified that there's potential for some cleanup language needed for water restrictions. Uh, one of the specifics that I've, that I've been made aware of is that existing language references D P, D P license permit. Which, as I understand it, isn't necessarily relevant to Topsfield at this time. And so there's some cleanup needed on that, that I know that Superintendent Crom is working on to provide, uh, provide to us. And then the marijuana bylaw, it's, that's one that Chief Hubby identified as something he'd like us to consider as well. We're currently using the state law. Uh, we don't have a local bylaw around marijuana, open container violations. And his concern is, is that without having a local bylaw, we can still write citations at the state level. But there's concerns around the, uh, appeal process associated with that, if someone were to appeal it. There's, my understanding is that many, if not most of the communities which voted in opposition to legalization shortly after that did pass local marijuana bylaws, which there are plenty of to look at. And I know, um, my, in my conversation with KP, they've worked on these in the past and they said they'd send us, send me an example of one they've already done that we can start working off of. The next one is also one that Chief Hubby and myself have talked about. This is a thickly settled speed limit reduction. With the Massachusetts Modernization Act, uh, that Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Pluto passed, uh, when they came into office. It allowed communities to adopt a, uh, regulation that allowed for all speed in a community to be twenty-five miles per hour. Unless otherwise, uh, unless otherwise marked. Meaning that Route ninety-seven, Route One would not be subject to this. But some of our side roads, neighborhood streets would be reduced down to twenty-five miles per hour if we qualify. One of the things Chief's looking at right now is to determine if we meet the standards to reduce to twenty-five. Because it wasn't a conblock, it was basically saying you have to be thickly settled in certain areas. And some other requirements or thresholds the town or city would have to meet in order to adopt that regulation. So we're looking at that right now and seeing if it makes sense. But, you know, one of the things we hear, we hear a lot about is, is speeding in town. And that's certainly something that we're aggressively trying to, uh, tackle between enforcement, the traffic advisory. And this could be a nice addition to that if it makes sense and is supported by the board.
Kevin, how would someone driving through the town be aware if we adopt something like that as to what the speed is if there is no sign up?
So would I, would I, I was fortunate enough in my last experience to be on the front lines when we adopted this in the community I came from, uh, before here. And what we ended up doing was putting twenty-five mile per hour signs at, uh, the main entryways into the town. So Route twenty-two from coming from Wyndham into Beverly, there was a sign there that said, "Speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour unless otherwise marked, uh, otherwise noted," or something to that effect. And that way, the first thing you see when you come into town is twenty-five miles per hour. And then, you know, there's a little bit of cost associated with purchasing signs and putting them up. But it's, it's, it's a nominal cost to the, to the safety improvements that come along with something like this if it's, if it's supported.
I was going to say, I've seen those signs in a lot of towns, twenty-five unless otherwise noted.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's another way they sometimes do it. When you get to an area, you put up a sign that says "thickly settled" and then that goes to the state laws, what thickly settled is. But I'd like to speak for a moment, since we're talking about lots of signs here. I believe that the sense of the town of Topsfield as a rural community tends not to want to have lots and lots of signs. I can remember having a discussion with Gary Wild before he was the superintendent. We were talking about some that we were dealing with with the rail trail and we said we really don't want too many. He, he said, "Yeah, right. They got one sign after the other, after the other. It's just not right." I think that's a bit of an attitude that, uh, and I, I, I would say that most citizens would feel that way. We need to have signs that provide for safety. But if, unless there's a clear need for the sign, I would say we want to do what we can to avoid just layering sign upon sign upon sign and making this look like a city, rather than the town of Topsfield.
It may be that going to this, um, in, in keeping with what you said, Dick, it could be that going to this actually reduces signs. Because you don't need signs on every street. You would need them at the entrances to let people know it's twenty-five unless something else.
I'm not talking to this issue. I'm talking to the fact that we're talking about signs here and there and we've talked about them before. I, I didn't mean in this particular case, but just that we're talking about signage. And I, I think that we should, we should be careful about how much road signage we force into our community.
Well, I think that's exactly what I am saying. That we're discussing the issue of how do you notify people if you're a thickly settled area and what the speed is. And so if the solution is to put signs at the entrance, as Kevin suggested, it may end up taking signs down other streets because you don't need to say it's a reduced down to twenty-five when they might have thought it was thirty or forty. So there might be some reductions elsewhere in town.
And point of fact, I would imagine that the roads that you would put the signs on are the ones that are already the busy roads. Whereas the sign, the roads that you could remove them from would be more of the side, more of your rural roads. Now, I apologize for bringing this up at this point. I did not mean it references these speed signs. I'm talking about signs in general, stop signs, yield signs. Yes, the speed signs, whatever the case may be, but, uh, so I apologize for confusing the issue here. Next.
That's a good point, Dick.
Yeah, and I, I, for what it's worth, I, I'm a big sign pollution guy myself. I think it's, there's a lot to be said about, you lose the message if you have too many signs up. You're not getting the, what you're trying to have across.
Kind of like at our four-way stop coming into town with, what do we have, sixteen signs there? Street signs, stop signs, this way to this town, that town.
So, um, the next one on this is, is, this is one that's a little bit of a long shot, but I wanted to at least have it as a placeholder. We have an opportunity to, to replace all the lights in town, uh, working with National Grid. National Grid owns the lights and they will retrofit those with LED lighting. Doing a little research, there, there is an opportunity to potentially purchase the lights. If we purchase the lights, we'd be responsible for maintenance going forward. But there are grants that can help support purchasing of the lights, in addition to that, a retrofit of the lights. And so if we own them, we retrofit them, we can actually see greater savings on our electric bill if we did that. Potentially, if the offset on the maintenance is there. But what really interests me is that if we own the lights, we can add a lot of really interesting technology potentially to that retrofit. Dimming of lights at certain hours, where you can control on your, on your smartphone, things that we currently can't do. That could add, leveraging the technology that's out there, that, that could help make this a really interesting project. I'm not sure if, if, from, to be realistic on a capacity standpoint, in a priority standpoint, if this is the next priority or, or, or something else might rise. But like I said, it's a placeholder for conversation and to see if it's something that the board thinks is a priority that they'd like us to consider. Or not purchase them and it goes off and we just let National Grid do the retrofit and move forward in that direction. But I wanted to at least spark the conversation through this process and if it's something that the board would support and be interested in pursuing.
Kevin, is retrofit anything more than changing to LED lights? Does it involve something else?
Uh, it's usually the head of the, it's the, uh, the pole itself will be maintained, but typically replacing out the head and, and the light itself goes along with that, so.
The head as well, okay. Do we have a say in what the head looks like? Are there different heads?
We have a say in the, not, no, not in the head, but we have a say in the, the color of the light, how blue it is and, and what comes out. There's actually two examples that are outside of town wall right now. Of two, two different LED lights that National Grid put in for us. So that we could get a sense of, if we went with them with the retrofit, kept everything the same way, we could go with one or two, one of those two as the light townwide. Any person who's in either public safety or, or public works will tell you they want the brighter light. But the bright lights can be pretty bright at the same time too, so. We'll, we'll see if, we'll see how the, as we work through the, down this path, what the right decisions are made, color the light, own and versus not owning them. But it's, it's, it's certainly exciting opportunity if we, if we did take it on, um, to do some, some really innovative and neat things, uh, using our light, using light poles.
If National Grid does the conversion to LED, we will save money. Is that not right?
So they will take, like, uh, uh, my understanding, my conversations, they'll, they'll say, "Okay, you did a light retrofit. We're, we expect you to have a savings of X percent based on the reduced output from those lights of the electricity used." If we owned them though, we could, like I said, dim them.
We could get additional if we own it. The, the point being though, that if, if nothing happens and we simply agree to do the LED lights, which we did actually have this conversation about a year ago with Dave Bond and we knew that the idea that they would be saving money on it. That, that is the point, that if we do nothing and simply let them convert it to LED, we will save some money. The point here is that we might be able to save more if we take over the responsibility, but then we also take on the responsibility of maintaining it. Next.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's right. DPW building. That's one which we've had some conversations about. I've, I'm very interested in, in trying to find a use for that building of some sort.
This is the old DPW building.
Thank you.
The old, uh, the old one.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna leave the guys up on the hill alone. This is the, uh, the former one downtown, which right now.
I'm, I'm going to ask, Kevin, I'm going to ask that you change the naming of this to Old Highway Garage. It's the way it's typically referred to amongst a lot of people in town, Old Highway Garage.
I'll do it right now. Sounds great. I've had some preliminary conversations just to understand some history around it and what's possible on that building. But the, the, the hope on that would be to do something productive with that space. Um, right now, it's, it's, it's a piece of blight property in our downtown. Um, it's a liability with people going in and possibly going on the roof and falling in. I've heard some stories of, of, you know, things happening over there that aren't great. And it's an opportunity, I believe, to create some, some vibrancy in the downtown as part of the revitalization effort. And so in order to do that, um, you know, I want to have a conversation with you folks on is there a willingness and an appetite to move forward with a, a potential disposition of that property? And by doing so, allowing there to be a different type of use, potentially a commercial use, that could create possibly an anchor tenant restaurant, brewery, something down there that can activate that space and help activate the downtown. Because right now, it's really not, we're not collecting any tax revenue off of it, not collecting any, not, it's not an amenity that brings people into the town. Uh, or people from town to be able to have somewhere to go to enjoy their, themselves. And, uh, yeah, that's what this one is. I've had conversations about what the path would look like to, to, to do something with that building. With, with people who, with department heads. Had conversation with Martha Morrison, understand what, what goes into that as well. And, you know, having done that, believe there's a path that we can take if, if it's desired. I know there's a path we could take if desired to, to pursue it. And I know that personally, I think it's very, very, very important that if it's something we want to pursue, I want to make sure we have an incredible amount of public input and, and transparency about why we're doing it and what's possible there. Um, and get feedback on what people might want to see happen for that space. To try to potentially, like I said, help with the downtown revitalization and activate, um, a currently blight property. And although, won't be earth-shattering, provide us with ongoing revenues through a tax base, through the tax base. So.
Kevin, what do you propose with it being on here as a warrant article? Is this, um, feedback is obtained prior to the meeting and this is asking for what?
Yeah, so.
Money to move forward?
So what I'll, um, to take the steps on this would be first to transfer rights, uh, to the select board if needed. So we need to work with a clerk to do some title search on that and figure out rightfully who, if we have the ability to, to, to do, do we, does the select board have jurisdiction on that property? I believe you do, but I gotta actually verify that. And then, um, associated with that would be a potential zoning change. Um, it abuts the downtown business, uh, Business Village. But it's not currently within those boundaries. And then extend School Street potentially as well. Down a little bit farther, which would give the box top actual frontage for the first time. Even their grandfathered in, so it's not an issue, but they'd have that. And then we provide, uh, access to the, to the facility, to the property. And then if those things are all simultaneously going in front of the public, having a conversation about, again, what they'd like. And then crafting an RFP that can hit the street if it passes town meeting to see who would be interested in that property and what they would do in that property. And then at the discretion of the town, decide if, if they wanted this, uh, go, if they want to sell the property and to who and for what purposes. And we can have a lot of control over what, what happens on that property through the RFP process, which will be both starting with a boilerplate, uh, us collectively and putting our, our, our needs locally for that property and then incorporating the community's input. So those would be the steps. The last one I talked about, the RFP is, is simultaneous to the process leading up to town meeting. But for a town meeting purpose, it would be probably bundling about three, potentially two or three different types of articles together to, to vote them. Because if any of those three don't pass, then we wouldn't be able to do anything with that building, if that's the desire of the, of the community.
We still could move forward even if a couple pass. Let's say, for instance, the zoning change is approved to put it into the Business Village and they approve the extension of School Street, but they don't want to sell the property. Then we could lease it to someone who comes in and develops it. So there are options, even if all three don't pass.
Right, right. So it would either be, right, so it'd be a sale or a lease. We could lease the land and the property itself, um, if that's a more desirable. I mean, through the, the, the community meetings, um, we can write an RFP that does just that. Or we can just say, you know, we, somebody come in and do something right here, um, take it. There's a couple of ways we could kind of go through that process. You are correct. I think if, if, I think when I say, they'd either have to approve the sale of it or the lease of the property, right, to be able to do something.
Right. And, and key to this will be having the planning board be supportive of it, which so far, at least in discussions with Martha, um, she's very supportive. And to be able to depict what could be there. Because I think some people might find it hard to imagine what could be built up there and what the impact would be to the surrounding area. So really mapping that out to give them a visual of what the options could be.
And there, there is the possibility, and I, we have to be, I mean, just need to be strategic about it. But there's always the possibility to, you put the RFP on the street before you go to town meeting, have the respondents. Don't select the respondent, because we don't, we can kick them all out at the end of the day and say, "Thank you, but no thank you." See if it passes town meeting and have sort of a proposal. See if it passes town meeting and have sort of a proposal in hand that you could say, well, these are some of the things that have potentially come through. There's a different ways we could potentially look at, um, go navigating the, the process, but, um, it's, it's certainly one that I think will be an interesting process to undertake and could be a huge, huge benefit to the town financially and from, I think most importantly, from the bringing an amenity downtown.
Could I just, I ask the board, uh, your reaction to, um, looking to develop the old highway garage in that area, uh, to something to support revitalization, your reaction to that?
Uh, I couldn't be more in favor of it. Um, I think quite literally, I couldn't be more in favor. Around, uh, that I, I've looked in the windows, there's some tremendous vehicles, uh, hidden in there, including a four by four with tank tracks. But none of it belongs to us. So right now, uh, I think a single vehicle in there is ours. Uh, we're basically, we have this, uh, piece of property which is unattractive, which is unsafe, which is big and could be utilized in a commercially viable way to bring people into a downtown. It doesn't have, you know, residential abutters of note. I mean, eventually, you know, the, the site, you'll get to a house eventually, but you know, it's the, the fire. There is a single house there on School Street, a two family house. But other than that, you've got businesses all around it, the box top shop, the firehouse, um, some green belt.
Library.
Yeah. And, and there is a, a private, privately owned parcel that, uh, is in there as well that currently can't be built on. Um, so I, I don't see a drawback to it. Um, it, it is, uh, to Kevin's point, I think a potential liability to us. Uh, at the, at the very most, at the very least, it's ugly, uh, and does nothing for us at the moment. And as we look around and have our own frustrations with the shopping center that we can't do anything with, that would be another place that we could, you know, revitalize the commercial presence in downtown. Well, here's a space we can do something with in theory. And so I'm a hundred percent on board with, with this idea of redeveloping it.
Great, thank you. Can I ask on board or, or Dick or Kevin, who owns the equipment that's inside there? If we don't own it, whose is it?
I think it's the environmental police, isn't it primarily?
Um, a lot of it is environmental police that's been given access to the building to store some of their stuff. Um.
So the first, yeah, if you're facing the garages, the first two doors on the left-hand side are, and that's one bay. That represents the environmental police. The next door over, door within the bay, within another bay is where the rail trail keeps its materials. And the other side of that bay is the trailer for the, uh, fire department emergency, something.
Council on Aging keeps their bus.
Trailer in there for them. And what's happened to the other section there is where we keep the, uh, Council on Aging, uh, bus. That's the last I know. We used to keep it in there.
Yeah, it's in there still.
Those are the uses, but, but that, that's not the important part. We have to find ways to, if the right thing to, the right thing to do is to do something with that property. We should, we, we, we need to know what's there and deal with how we're gonna deal with it, but that should not be the limiting factor, what, what people are doing in there now. That, those things can be moved. That, that is a jewel piece of property. It is a, it's central to the town, is a jewel piece of property. What happens to it, I think is very important. I think it has tremendous opportunities. I've always felt that way. Knowing where it is, I know of some of the problems that exist. I do want to be a little careful. Though when we talk about, uh, butters, we do have houses, uh, uh, single family houses that are but that property. So they would be affected, uh, by any change in some ways. A backdoor neighbor, so to speak, would change, would change from what it is now, which is nothing of act, of, uh, of action. Um, but yes, that is a beautiful piece of property and the questions might be how it would be used either by the town or by a, a private industry.
Boyd, did you have some thought?
I agree. I think we ought to move on with it, move on with it.
Okay, great. That's overwhelming support.
Clear. A butter wise, there are two, uh, houses on High Street, though there's a significant amount of trees in between that and the firehouse and the one on School Street. Those are the only abutters I see. So.
Great. All right. Kevin, back to you. Light pole easements.
Well, just real quick, thank you all. That was really great feedback and I appreciate the conversation on that. Um, it's exciting. Um, light pole easements. So with the solar lights downtown, um, there was four identified properties, um, which we received, we went and obtained license agreements with in order to put the light poles, um, behind the sidewalks and technically on their property. Um, this would allow, these easy, the license agreement allows us to have access. It's, it's perfectly fine. And, and we'll be able to install without any problem. All four of the, the property owners were fantastic to work with, all for the project. And, um, there was no issues in obtaining signatures and, and moving that forward. And just if they're listening, thank you. Appreciate the support. Um, this would then allow us to, um, go forward with an easement, which is typically, uh, the, the, the a standard that if you're putting, you know, pro- uh, product or something on a private property, uh, if you're accessing private property, an easement's the typical mechanism. So this would just be, uh, firming up what we've already done, um, with the license agreements.
And, um, Kevin, had that been discussed at all with the folks about moving towards an easement away from a license?
So, um, each of the license agreements had language in there about moving towards an easement, um, saying that the town will would, would, could look to moving towards that. And I did have conversations, I think at least with two of the four specifically about, um, that language and in what that meant. So, um, and the other two people were, I, I can't imagine that. Just based on their enthusiasm over the project, I don't think it would be, uh, a, a problem, but, um, I'm certainly, if this is, if we want to move forward with the easements, I'll certainly have a, a more defined conversation on that with each of those people and let them know we're moving forward.
The easement could involve some money from the town to them in order to achieve the easement, if, if that's appropriate. It also could have an effect on the taxes that they pay. They could say that we provided the easement, therefore our taxes should be down a little bit. All those things should be considered, yes.
The, um, we, I would not likely go forward with an easement if, um, it wasn't, the land wasn't donated to the town. That's my personal preference and per, opinion on it, but that doesn't mean. Uh, i- if, if I had three of the four people say, absolutely, I'll sign tomorrow, great. If one of them says, I want a thousand dollars, I'd probably say, okay, we'll keep the license agreement.
Okay, okay.
Um, but yes, that's a great point. There could be, um, during the, uh, title search, there could be some, um, um, uh, some costs associated with it, but nothing that we can't absorb, um, within our operating budget, uh, under legal. Um, the next one is the affordable housing policy statement. Um, that was brought up during our, our efforts around town goals for this year. Um, there was a conversation about the affordable housing and I think somebody had mentioned, um, maybe we do a non-binding, um, resolution, um, at town meeting. I've, I've thought about this and I, I've, I've, I'm reflecting on it. My, my own personal opinion on this is affordable housing such a, um, there's so many elements to it. Um, that I don't know if town meeting is the place where that conversation might make most sense. And, um, that's me saying with all due respect to you, all to your opinions of it, it might certainly be right. But I think if, if we had a community conversation about housing in general at some point, or a master, during the master plan process, this would certainly be a key component of that conversation. And so I, I just, I, it's another option, I guess, if we didn't want to put this on the town warrant, there are some other mechanisms of ways we could have that conversation. The other thing would be rather than a, a resolution, whether you support affordable housing or not, because I could see that just pitting people against each other within the community. Maybe it's a resol- it's a, uh, an article that, um, creates and establishes, um, a housing, a group to explore housing, um, needs in the community or, or something of that nature, where they'll do research and present on, on the findings with a emphasis on affordable housing or something of that nature. Um, I think it's a really op- great opportunity to provide education around, um, affordable housing and what it can look like and what it means in Toppsfield. Um, good or bad, whatever perspective you have of it. Um, but the states obviously has a 10% threshold, we're about 7.3% affordable. So we're still subject to unfriendly 40Bs. Um, and we certainly want to make sure we're conscious of what affordable housing could mean for individuals, but for the community as a whole, um, for a project basis or, or, or other. So just that would make sense. I just wanted to put that out there for y'all.
Yeah, I, Kevin, I would say I would agree with you. I think this is such a big item. And unless we've really thought through all the implications, as you said, everyone's gonna have a different perspective of what, of what that means. If we have something specific that comes up and we're presented with an, an opportunity, uh, there's no reason that we couldn't call a special town meeting to move forward, like for instance, if someone came and said they were gonna buy the shopping center. And, but in order to do that, they wanted the ability to, um, go three, three stories and, and put in affordable apartments or, or whatever. I think either that or the master plan is the, the point to have that discussion. I think it's just what ifs and possibilities and it's, I think that'd be a very hard conversation to have at town meeting.
I would say town meeting as a concept isn't any single thing. It's, it's a whole variety of different things. And therefore, almost by definition, you can't have that conversation on a warrant article or in a single morning or afternoon. It would be many conversations over many different projects or ideas.
Yeah, I, I think that would be tough. Um, Boyd or Dick, any thought on, on that item?
Well, I agree, uh, I, it's a huge concept. It's a huge subject. And, uh, it ought to be looked at in total with what we've got for housing, affordable and, uh, uh, and, and where, how we can get back to our, get, get to our 10%, um, so we can avoid 40B issues.
How did this get on the list?
Yeah, I'm not, I, I just, we were having the conversation about the economic development and, uh, it's one of our town goals. And one of the items on there was affordable housing. And there was a conversation about whether to keep that on as, as a goal. We ended up deciding, uh,
Who's we?
Uh, the select board, sorry. The select board decided to leave that on. And there was a, one point, my, my little tally list of, of ongoing warrant, potential warrant articles, I jotted down, someone suggested that this might be something to take up might. It was a might. It wasn't a hard, this is what we should do, but.
I didn't remember talking about the warrant.
I, I believe it was actually, I think you suggested, you may have suggested it as an item for a ballot vote or town meeting. Uh, but I think it was you who suggested that this is something that needed town input in some way or another. And maybe it was a, a town meeting or ballot question.
Uh, I tend to agree with the consensus. It doesn't belong, and it's, I think it's your point also, Kevin, it probably doesn't belong at town meeting at this point. There's nothing specifically asked for. And it's trying to write a policy and have somebody try to sign off on a policy. We, we can have a policy that the board, that's what I thought this was when we had it as a goal, was we, we'd be working on some kind of a policy thought as to where we would be directing and whatever, but I can't imagine. Uh, I don't, I, I don't understand what the value of the policy being signed off at, at some kind of a warrant would be. Uh, I, I don't, I don't.
I'm fine.
Sounds like we're all in agreement that it has no business on the, uh, uh, town meeting.
That's easy. Onto the next one, Kevin.
And the last one I have on the list is, um, Coppermine Road, um, and that. So I found out a couple of weeks ago from, uh, Representative Brad Hill, they had put an earmark for $45,000 in the state operating budget to, to support the paving of the Middleton section of Coppermine Road. That was, um, uh, removed out of the operating budget, uh, along with, uh, I think mostly all earmarks this year due to the, uh, economic constraints, um, that the state and local, local out, local communities are dealing with. And as a result, um, uh, that funding mechanism, the paving won't be funded through state funds. I know that when we were meeting with the neighbors, um, we certainly had, there was a desire, potential, a potential desire, I should say, um, by the neighbors to, um, have an STM or to have this on the ATM, um, this, this coming year. There was also a conversation whether it should be, um, a citizen's petition or if it's something that the, the select board would put on. Um, I'm my, just operationally wise, I, I, my plan is to contact Joyce Nar, uh, who's been the point of contact for the neighbors, uh, for me, um, at least through the entirety of this. And let her know what situation is and kind of gauge what she thinks. We've gotten some really great feedback from the neighbors up there about the work that, uh, superintendent, uh, Wilds and his team did, uh, to patch those, those craters that existed out there. And, um, people seem to be very happy and I, um, I'm, I'd, I'd like to get that because I think timing on something like this is important. If, 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 if we're still struggling from an operational standpoint, uh, struggling with, with revenue projections and as we go into this budget cycle and, and whatnot, um, you know, I, I'd I'd hate to see the town take it up at the wrong time. And then that's sort of the direction in perpetuity that's, that, that's where we're at, right? The, the town's, the town's voiced at that time that that's their opinion. So, um, I don't know if this is something that the select board wants to put on, if it's something where we should have another meeting, a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors and have a conversation with them and get a sense. But I certainly wanted to make sure I, I flagged it for the group because we've had prior conversations on it.
Well, I, I mean, just for me, I, I gave the residents my word that I would support it at town meeting when we next had an opportunity to put it there. I understand money is, is now and will remain tight. Um, that said, I think the general gist of our many, uh, discussions with them was we were looking for a temporary fix to get us to the next town meeting. And so unless they come back and say, we don't want you to take it up at the next town meeting because we're worried that people will vote it down. Um, and we're happy with what we have right now, let's wait a year. But if there, if the resident's general consensus is yes, we want to go forward at this town meeting, then, then I am going to support them and, and argue in favor of it.
I would think it would be worthwhile to raise it even in these tough times, because the town could at least give their, um, feedback. Like, no, we're not going to do it. We wouldn't support it this year just because of the situation that we're in and money is so tight. Or no, we would never think of supporting it. It's a private road. We're not going to do it. To at least let the residents know what the town is thinking. So I would, I'm sorry, those, my dog is going a little crazy. Um, I, I would support putting it on as well to let the residents hear what, what the town is thinking.
We, certainly going into town meeting, though we need a lot more information to, to get clarified as to the status of it, who really owns it, what the options are. What the position is with Middleton and, you know, we have an agreement for this, we have an agreement for that. If we do this, we'll do that with them, whatever. There's a whole bunch of things that need to go along with that. Not just the dollar request, but a lot of answers to the, the citizens as to what it is that we're doing and why we're doing it. And how it will be cleared up for the future.
And the background, because a lot of, of, you know, history and work have gone into this to give them an understanding of where we got and why. And then all the information Dick just said, so that they have a, a, a complete picture in order to make the decision.
Um, Marshall, um, just to give you a little bit of cover on the commitment that you've made to those people. At the time that that discussion was going on, we weren't really sure that, uh, we weren't really committed to replacing it at that, or fixing it at that time.
Yeah.
Uh, they weren't convinced that we could fix it properly at that time. And, uh, I have a hunch that, uh, uh, I have a hunch that they just might be willing to wait until.
Well, and, and, and that's what I said. If, if we go back to them and they now believe in our repair work and the, and they've had a chance and based on the email we got from Joyce, you know, it, it, we have lived up, or really Gary has lived up to, to his promise of the work being done there. I mean, if I lived there, I, I, I've driven it. It's now tremendous compared to what it was before. I might practically look at it and say, listen, if we want the town to support this, this is going to be a difficult year for them to do that. Let's wait one more year because we still have the commitment to maintain it, right? Gary is still gonna go out there and fix anything. If one of his repairs degrades, he's gonna go back out there and fix that again. But at the same time, if they are steadfast in their desire for us to put it before town meeting, then, then I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to do that. I think the better decision may be to wait a, a year to whatever, as long as the road is in good shape now, to where we're all in a better financial shape. But I, I, I'm basically going to leave that decision up to them if they want to go for it this year or wait.
So Kevin, you'll be reaching out to Joyce to find out if they want to move forward?
I'll talk with Joyce and I'll probably set up a time, um, maybe even out at the site. Cause I haven't met them since, in person since the, uh, the patches happened. Socially distancing, of course. Um, but we'll, uh, maybe get out there like we did, I think a year ago, Vice Chair, you and I were out there with them in probably the coldest day of the year, I think.
It was freezing.
Talking to them about the, what, what's possible. So maybe do something similar again and, um, bring Gary and get a sense for where they, what, what they're thinking. And we can bring that information maybe back to you folks. And if they're steadfast in wanting to, to see it on the warrant, um, that will be a decision point at that point, right?
And if you get that meeting set up, I would love to know when that is.
Absolutely. I'll send it in, I'll let everybody know the time and date when that is so everyone can pop in.
We just can't have any discussion as far as our opinions. It has to be fact gathering unless we post it.
Or the, the other ones, if you don't show up, then.
In addition to the fact that this is, the warrant article is what, what's at hand here. But in addition to that, the things that I mentioned before still need to be done. We don't need a warrant article to work out what the technical reasons are, what our arrangements are with Middleton, et cetera, et cetera. Those things need to be going on now. Whether we start paving it this year or 10 years from now, we need to get that straightened out. And this is the time to do that.
Um, I've spoken with Andy from Middleton. He is, he has no reservations in doing an interminable agreement, allowing us to maintain the road if we so choose to do so. Um, but so the agreement's not in place, but the, the, the general sense is, is we could probably move in that direction if, if and when.
We have to understand who owns it and whether that is, is appropriate. Is there a taking that's appropriate in this particular case? Because it is a necessary road for that particular community, uh, on and on and on. It needs, it needs to get straightened out properly.
The ownership, the ownership established, establishing the ownership is critical in my opinion.
It mu- it's going to be, uh, it might cost some funds to do that because I know the, the, the non-legal people who've looked at it, um, so far, well, I shouldn't say it. KP did a little bit of work on that as well. Um, the ownership on that is, is very difficult to determine at this point. It, the research we've done thus far. The reason we were able to, to do, to do the potholes and to do it in quick order because we needed to, was because we have that easement. That was our sort of golden ticket that said legally, we have an easement, we can patch it. Um, so it, one of the things too is, and this is, this is the other part of the, the conversation worth noting, and I, I put it out on the table, but not to have, to draw it out, but just so you're aware of it. If we were to pave that road, there's a potential benefit to running, um, a backup water line from Locust Street down there into the subdivision. So that if the line that runs underneath 95 ever failed, there would be a backup option that that subdivision could use. Um, because if that line broke under the highway, um, at the middle of winter, we would be in a bad situation. Those neighbors, we'd, we'd have trucks coming up there pumping water and the whole thing. And we, we might want to try to get ahead of that. That would be, from a design and engineering standpoint, might push us out anyway. So as part of the conversations with the neighbors, if we're going to do it right, um, and incorporate that, it might, we might have a little bit of reprieve anyway, um, if they agree that that's the right thing to do.
Is that something that Gary feels is necessary to do to prevent some large disaster? If the line were to break under 95? Would he proceed with that regardless of what happens with the paving? If this paving didn't even exist?
It's more of the opportunity, um, till this year, the town never a, really acknowledged that they had the ability to, to ma- to do any work on that road, um, being in Middleton and not, the, the easement wasn't prescriptive on that line. Um, but talking to KP, they've indicated that they believe we could, um, potentially run that line. Um, but
I actually thought that was the only, um, ability we had in, in print, that we had the ability to utilize that and maintain the water line.
I might, I believe it's actually a, a different, a different line that crosses the road from the golf course. If my, if my, it, I believe that that line goes
The, the wording, the wording in that particular section includes two things, two very separate things. One, the water line and the other, the road. The water line still refers to the one under 95. And that's, it's in the other direction, so to speak, but
What does that have to do with that road then, if it's under 95?
The road. It has nothing to do with the road. In that, in that document, the reference to the water has nothing to do with the road. This is an additional discussion about putting in a wa- an, uh, a backup water source for that community.
Yeah, I thought the easement also specified though, that we had an easement in order to maintain the water line.
Yes, under, under 95. That's the way, because there was no water line.
There's no water line on.
Water line under that road.
Yeah, that's, it's just so odd that it's
The easement is to maintain the road itself and to maintain the water line from, from one end of Topsfield under 95 and into the community.
So it's a different section of the community that the easement is referring to?
Totally different easement, right?
Yeah.
It's a totally different portion of that easement.
All right. Well, Kevin, if you want to pursue that with Joyce, and then we can have discussions afterward, because it definitely, you know, needs there. Okay. Before we talk further about whether it's going to be a warrant article.
And I didn't mean to throw you that curve ball at the very end there, but I did want to at least put it on the radar just in case.
Yeah. Um, and, and I got a note here just to correct the record here. Um, Chief Collins Brown says 10 school Ave is the old fire station. Highway came to the location later. So just wanted to share that.
Um, one, one, one last item I did want to mention that I didn't put on the list that I just want to sort of, again, put in your mind, put it for, for, for conversation later on is we, I talked about the earmarks in the budget, how earmarks were eliminated for communities this year, um, in the state budget. One of the earmarks we went for was a hundred thousand dollars to, to do a master plan. Um, that obviously is not going to be available through that funding mechanism. Uh, but I did want to just mention that if this is something that we wanted to pursue through the, the warrant process through free cash, uh, to help support that. If it's a priority of, of the select board that we want to move on this anyway, um, I just didn't want to miss the opportunity to have that conversation with you folks. But I do plan regardless to put that earmark in next year, uh, in the budget. But it just means we're pushing everything out in a, a year's time if we do.
Are there potential grants, Kevin, that could be pursued to support that master plan?
You know, one of my action items that I have, um, was, once I found that out, was to do a little deeper dive on other funding mechanisms. One of them is obviously going through this process, but I also wanted to do some deep diving into what grant opportunities are out there, state grants, even non-state grants, you know, that might be able to help us, um, either partially or fully fund something like that. Um, so that's something that, that I do want to tackle as well. Um, but I, I, I'm not familiar with any grants off the top that, um, provide for master planning, uh, specifically. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist, just means I haven't had a chance to do that deep of a dive.
Yeah. Um, thoughts, anybody on the master plan and the importance of that at this town meeting?
I mean, I think it's, it's our roadmap, our, our roadmap to downtown revitalization. So, um, and, and I know that we had hoped to have it as part of the state funding, I guess, but I don't know what the appetite would be at town meeting for it. Cause I think we would have to make a compelling case on what it's for, and that may be more nuanced than people want to hear.
Dick or Boyd, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, I, at this point in time, uh, things may change between now and then when we got a boot of warrant together. But my opinion is it might be pretty hard to explain, uh, why we need this, uh, since our, um, downtown revitalization is at a standstill.
Not at a standstill.
I, I, I don't mean, I don't mean that. I mean, as relates to the shopping center.
Yes, that, yeah. Nothing, no significant movement or activity there. You're right. Dick, any thoughts?
Is, is not for the downtown. It's for the entire town.
No, I, I, I recognize that. And my words were just that I think a lot of our focus is in the downtown and that's part of it. But yes, it is for the whole town, obviously.
But Dick, your, your thought on, um, approaching this town meeting with the idea of a master plan as the timing?
I don't think it's
Too bad?
I don't think it's good timing. Uh, and we need the input from the planning board, uh, but I don't think it's good timing in the first place. It's responsible, the planning board, master planning is responsible with the, the planning board. They have to be on board with it also. But I don't think, uh, at this point, I don't think it's the right thing to be on.
Kevin, um, discussions with Martha relative to this?
Yeah. So I've had, I mean, almost a year now, we've been talking about, um, zoning and then ma- uh, maybe for 10 months now, we've, we've talked about the master plan. She was aware of what's the earmark, um, for it. Um, from what I can, I don't want necessarily speak for her, but my, my impression is that, that she's generally in supportive of going through the process. Um, I would say that it's, you know, if we wanted to put it, I'm not advocating for it by any means. I, you know, it's a big ticket item to do it. Um, and there might be other ways to do it. But if, if it did go on there, certainly have a, a conversation if, if the planning board supports it on the warrant. It's one thing to get a grant for it. It's another to come out of the, um, general fund.
But you think, you think there's a good chance of getting it back onto the state budget next year, right?
It's my, it's my, it's my, my personal priority is to, to, to get that earmark. Cause a lot of times earmarks are
So a hundred thousand dollars this year in front of town meeting when we think we get the money because the state likes to do these things, um, earmark. I, I think it's a pretty tough sell.
It's, it's kind of like Coppermine, in a, in a little, in some ways, right? So I, I'm not, I just, like I said, I want to make sure I mention it because that's something that we had talked about at a certain point. And the only last one I'll mention too is the economic development plan. I didn't put it on there, uh, at this point. I know we talked about it last year. Um, I don't know if there's, we need to have any discussion right now. We're all aware of what that is. If there's a desire, when we keep these conversations going to, to have it added to the list, I'll put it there for discussion purposes and as a placeholder. Um, but I'll, I'll just sort of kind of leave it at that. But just mention that was another one that I wanted to at least flag for everybody that, that's out there.
Yeah. And just in my, um, two cents on that one is I am, um, in favor of bringing in a person, um, to focus on this area. Right now we have volunteers, um, you know, and we're doing it on a shoestring in their spare time. But if we're serious about trying to raise the level of, of businesses that come in here and, you know, do showcases to highlight what Topsfield has to offer and try to bring restaurants in or try to get, uh, you know, new activities underway and excitement about the town, that's not going to be achieved with some, a couple of volunteers part-time. Um, so it's, it's how serious are we about trying to stir revitalization? There was a lot of opportunity outside of the shopping center that, that came up. There's a lot of things that we can do, but we don't have anybody to do them. So I, there's only so much we can move forward with Kevin working 60 to 70 hours a week and, uh, some, some volunteers. So it's how serious we are about it.
If you, if the board, if the board would like, I'll add it to the list, the ongoing list that we have for discussion purposes as we continue, um, these meetings on the, on the warrant.
I, I would say yes, because it's only discussion. I mean, it could get knocked off, but, um, you know, maybe Kevin, at, at a later meeting, you can speak to what you had envisioned for that person to be doing and what that would mean to the town. And then the board can say it's, you know, worth pursuing right now, or we want to push it off. But I think giving you the opportunity to share with everybody what you had envisioned would be a good thing, even if it doesn't move forward as an article.
Yeah.
I think it deserves some more attention.
Okay.
Uh, Marshall, any?
No, no, I, I, I definitely agree with the path that you're talking about, but the timing is, is what we need to focus on.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. That's, that's my, uh, I'll conclude with that. And thank you all for the time. I know this was a long one and we, we covered a lot. And I just really thank you for sticking with me on it.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Um, thank you everyone for tuning in. Mike and David and Catherine and Deb, as always, for your support and, and Chief Collins Brown. Thank you. Um, all right. Uh, we're just looking now for our favorite motion.
Motion to
Come on, Dick. You can do it, Dick.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call. Boyd.
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Lynn, aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.